We're recording.
I think we'll watch what happens on that hit.
You'd like to call to order the meeting for the Strategic Planning Committee?
How?
Committee meeting. Are there any public comments? Doesn't look like it. Agenda changes, none that I'm aware of? Alright, so school mission statement. Currently, our mission statement is...
Is it in there?
Oh, I've got it. "The mission of Freeburg Community High School, in partnership with its greater communities, is to enable all students to become productive and responsible citizens by providing them with opportunities to maximize their intellectual, physical, and social capabilities in a safe, caring, and learning environment." So, when we, it's been almost a year, when we had our community-wide Strategic Planning Committee meeting, and at that time, it was suggested that we go over our mission statement and make sure that it still applied. Think at that meeting, to me, it looked like mostly applied, but he suggested we do a small move together and talk about it. Based on the goals and what came out of that committee meeting. I think everybody, all, everyone here but one person was at that committee meeting. So, does anybody have comments or questions? Concerns about the current mission statement? This is gonna be a really quick meeting.
I, uh, just talking with Jill and Lori about it, they both like it. They think it's a pretty good statement, even though we haven't changed it in a while. The one thing we talked about is that we don't really have a vision statement. It seems like for most of it, that, you know, their vision is kind of the quick catch little phrase.
Right.
You know, like Smithon, world class academic excellence, the free of grace, door-reaching, teaching every child every day. But, I don't know.
Slogan?
Well, yeah, they, I mean, they, just in the world of education.
Right, a vision statement, right.
But, I, I think that would be, and then, you know, that's something short and sweet, we could put that now. As soon as I said that, I'm thinking, we have something on the bottom of our letter. Let me see. If I can find my letter.
Then, before we move on to that, does anybody else have comments on our mission statement? I tend to agree with the administration that although it hasn't been updated in a while, it still does seem to fit all of those marks we were trying to hit at that Strategic Planning Committee meeting. That is hard to say, Strategic Committee meeting. I'm like, I'm slurring, I've been drinking too much today.
Yeah. We got that on camera, didn't we? It's better than the customer.
Okay, I, I hear no comments or questions, so then...
I'm just reading, the, the, give us a moment, this, to, to go over these. It seems all encompassing, to me, it hits all the, all the points. I mean, change for change's sake certainly isn't, isn't necessary. I think it says everything it needs to say.
And I would concur with that. I thought then, they just thought that we oughta look at it and make sure. Did you find it?
No. I found a lot of blank letterheads, but doesn't have any, I thought we had a slogan on the bottom. It said slogan.
Is it maybe on our website at all, somewhere?
It's not. I mean, I, if it is, I didn't find it.
The only thing I would consider on it is if you wanted to make a distinction, or add a distinction on whether or not a student wanted to take a path to go into further education, higher education, or direct, directly into the, into the workforce, direct entry into the workforce. And it would, it would fall somewhere after become productive, responsible citizen and opportunity, you, blah, 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 and then two paths. One being direct entry into the, prepare him to be a, a good worker and be able to pursue that line, or prepare them for higher education. And I don't necessarily even think that that's necessary, but it, it could be a possible addition. I don't see another path that somebody can...
Right. Well, and I think really maximizing your intellectual, physical, and social capabilities even probably fills that.
Columbia has a statement here about lifelong learning. If that's where your plan is.
Uh, no. I, I read that. It was, it was just... Just a distinction that, yes, there's two paths, if you can go by, but in the long run. Nothing.
What would you call that? Would you call that career and profession? Or are you, are you gonna be careful? We gotta be careful with these words.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I mean, we want them to become productive and responsible citizens, providing their opportunities to maximize their intellectual, physical, and social capabilities.
Sometimes less is more.
Well, I, I agree. I mean, that's, I wish I'd said that.
Too much.
You know, the whole idea of a safe, caring, learning environment, I mean, that's something that we continue to strive for.
People and, yeah.
It simply is, is, as good as some of the others, better than Waterloo, better than a balance. Time to get, a balance is pretty good, too.
Yeah.
But I, I, and I apologize, I didn't think about, I know we used to have something that was on the bottom of things that we sent out, and I, it's not on, I typed in letterhead and it's not on there.
Well, I know Andy always used to say, eh, finish with...
Well, he, yeah, he liked, he had that Lincoln quote.
I didn't, I don't recall any.
Right, but, and I don't remember what it said. And so, to me, that would be something that, like, life could go on the bottom of every letter. You know?
You had that quote that's pinned on the wall, the opposite.
Right, do the right thing because of the right thing. That's kind of long. Yeah. But, I mean, no, I mean...
Do we, do we think we need a vision statement, something shorter, some sort of slogan?
Yeah.
It's good to see that they have a vision statement and a mission statement.
Don't, I was gonna just say the same thing. Yeah, I think they...
And it, you know, I got these off their websites. Right, and then, again, when you, you go through these academic administrative classes, I mean, we kind of brush over this and they say, well, you know, this is really a mission statement, supposed to be this, and the business is supposed to be that, but...
You do what you do.
Yeah. But I, I, you know, whatever we say, but...
Okay. Well, that seems, I think everybody's pretty happy then with what we've got as a mission statement. Do we think we need a vision statement? So, you do think we need a vision statement, something to, to add to that?
I think it's, like you said, to be put on the... I think it's something to me, it's kind of answer the question, what do you stand for? You know, I mean, if, if you can say it in five words or less, what do you stand for? You know, like, and I'm looking at Smithon and Freeburg and a couple of those other that are, that are short.
Right.
You know, I, I would say, I agree, I think the Scooters maybe...
Flop them.
Flip flop, or I would flip flop them.
Something like building character and quality education? Something like that?
Many times I say character, it always seems like...
They're, they're, they're a big one. They use that character future.
Well, let's... Building greater communities through education? That kind of takes a little bit out of our actual mission statement, too.
About... Something about bringing communities together through better education. I don't know.
Or opportunity through...
Well, that would definitely apply to us, with Smithon and Lori.
I, I mean, I don't know what else.
Because I, I, if it's a vision statement, and it's supposed to be about the students, and you got, you got a kid here that, he's got his whole life...
Providing more, or providing opportunities for better education. It's like there's a word.
Yes, I would, I would agree, but it should be targeted at, at some type of, a statement to a kid that the education is how you achieve, in hard work.
Well, I'm kind of going back to what you said, it, and, and we talk about it with a lot of kids nowadays. It's not necessarily only college, it's trade school, it's skills. Yeah.
I'm like, pull up a dentist, there would kind of all of education for a lifetime.
Yeah, but we're not providing that.
You'll pick up.
You know, I mean, basically stop it, internet, transition program, and stuff, between two?
Beginning, uh, beginning of lifetimes.
Preparing students for a lifetime.
Oh, okay.
Taking a foundation.
Providing, providing a, a foundation for a lifetime of education.
Put a bunch of words in the head.
Yeah. They might write down words.
Providing the foundation for a lifetime of education.
To be all they can be.
I think that one's taken.
Yeah.
We're not moving on.
Copyright infringement.
They Google, Google mission statements.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, and then, I, I think it would be probably beneficial to, if we put together a list, and then maybe have the students and the faculty kind of vote, or...
I agree.
Say, hey, what do you think, and... I mean, I just, I, I think that would be good.
I agree.
Right, what did we say?
People, people will tend to support that they help to create.
We can make, cut our vision statements.
But, I mean, I, I think maybe that's what we do, is try to come up, and that's my thought.
Okay, do we want to just do that now and, and send that to us all, send that as a Google, like, basically a Google, Google survey? How I suppose wins?
Do, uh, do you wanna go outside of?
Yeah, I, I think...
If you go outside, it probably can't be Google, because not everybody has Google. You'd have to do like Survey Monkey or something like that.
Okay, and I'm good with that. I think it would be good to go outside, because we, that initial meeting, we went outside and didn't really need to do that. So, I think that makes sense. Having parents and teachers and...
Do we wanna reach out to those on the committee and ask for their input on the choices?
Uh, we could. I think that makes sense also.
Because I did have one of the committee members asking if they should attend this meeting, and I said, I said, well, no, we don't. I said, I encourage this to this initial conversation.
Right.
So, maybe we can, what if we reach out to the people on the committee and say, you know, we're, we're looking for a, you know, a short phrase that we can use, you know, that we can adopt as our vision, that basically says what, you know, edit it, word it better than that, but says what we stand for.
And we can give them the examples of the vision statements.
Right, you know, here, here are a few things, yeah, right. Yeah.
I think that makes perfect sense.
Really do.
Alright, we have a way forward. The committee, committee will get, will we give them a letter, or email?
Um, we can, we can just put a short article in the paper, and then, and then put the link to the survey, and say, you know, looking for your input on a vision. You know, we talk about, here's our mission, you know, this is what we're looking for, is to help develop a vision.
Okay.
Something like that.
Sounds good. Then, any other input we need on our vision statement or the mission statement?
So, how about we'll start with the committee members and the board members, and I'll put all of them in the first, and ask for, you know, samples, and then we'll take, maybe take those samples, and do we wanna wait? I mean, do we wanna come back and then decide which five we use? As opposed to asking the entire community to give us examples? I mean, I think it's better if we say, hey, you know, these are, we're gonna use these, these are some examples, which ones? And then we can kind of say, hey, I like these five, or I like these seven.
I, I, I do think, I don't know, I think you open up to the committee from the beginning. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of input from the community in general, as a whole.
So then, we're gonna take those, and we're gonna come back and vote on...
And then, we, we narrow it down to our, our top five, and then send that to the faculty and, and the students.
Everybody, yeah.
So, input from everybody, narrow it down, and here, and then send it out further. Makes sense? Questions, concerns? I think it's, I could...
Because they're not gonna be reading the Freeburg Tribune. But I'm, but I'm sure the kids might say, hey, I really like, you know, whatever, you know, I think this would be a great vision statement for a high school.
The community, I mean, everybody.
Right, but I'm just saying, we'd have to do, you'd almost have to...
Do something other than just send the paper.
The paper to the kids and the, the teachers.
What? Got that book?
Well, I just, I, I, I don't know how productive it'll be to ask community to give us examples, but I think it's gonna be more productive if you, if you, if you're gonna send out something a mass, you know, call for opinions, that if you give them a sample, or if you give them what to pick from, then they can pick. But I think, I think it would be better if to, if...
So you think we should do kind of the opposite?
Well, no, I just think if you just reached out to the people that attended that meeting, and we've got a list of who attended, and we can say, you know, you attended, we are looking for examples here, or some samples that we thought about, we would like you to provide, you know, some samples, some more samples, and then the board will take these and, and try to come up with, and then we're gonna ask, then we, then you ask everybody to vote.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
I'm okay, I, I mean, I, I think, either ways are okay.
I think the people that spent the whole day here for this...
Is our first job.
They would feel like they're actually part of it and involved, than if we just went to everybody. And we could, we could go back and kind of, maybe we got some things down in the letter that were discussed.
Right.
Because we have that.
Now, where are yours?
Right here, gosh, there. Yes. I mean, is that okay?
Yes. Does that make sense?
Think of a human nature, you invite everybody, and everybody's gonna think, I've got it, and then somebody's gonna pick one, you know, and, and you want input, but how weighted is that input that we're trying to say? Like, I know people, and they come up with something that wasn't fit, but, okay, I'm done with that. We don't wanna create anything.
Yeah, yeah. I, I like that, I like what you and, and Doug also, I mean, that, that, no, it makes complete sense. I mean, and that's kind of, you know, I mean, you're, you're asking them to, you know, keep working a little bit. And then, we appreciate what you've done, and, and we rely on you as being kind of people that put the time and the effort.
Right. No, absolutely makes sense.
Okay, so I'll get something, I'll try to get it out until the next week or so.
Alright, well, we'll do that in a minute.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll look at the, I'll, you have a list? I don't even know if I have it. I'll look.
I'm not sure, I, I have it in my email somewhere, yes.
Yeah, I have to have it, too, yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll get it. Do you want me to send you the letter first?
No, no, just, just like to see it.
You'll get it.
Not approval, but...
Yeah, no, it'll, it'll be sent to the board, too, because you got it all there.
Right, right.
Okay.
Will we be ready to adjourn then?
So, for the next meeting?
Oh.
Well...
I'm going anywhere.
I mean, it seems like we do a, we like meetings before board meetings, not meetings...
It does make more sense.
It has been around a little.
Yeah, so, do we have anything else that we need before Thursday, I mean, before the February?
No, not that I'm aware of. Yeah. And that would take us a lot of time, I think.
I, I think, I think any discussion about that would be either, you know, if action could be taken in an open session or another closed session. And really have a meeting that night. But I, I think, I think, because there's been some other movement, lots of other things to, to, I think you're gonna maybe focus our attention on some stuff. Is it vague enough or not? I didn't value it.
We're told not to do that in the IC community, don't talk around an issue.
Do what?
Don't attempt to talk around an issue. Okay, so, we wanna have our meeting before the February meeting, then? That makes sense, on the 21st at 6:00?
Does that give you enough time to get everything out, to everybody and get results back?
A little bit more.
Yeah, and, and you can set those surveys up to open and close. Yeah. If not, I'll let you know when we're down next.
I won't be at March's meeting, I'll be in January for, for May, too. I'll be done this, March.
Not October.
I'm not ever requested either, because I can be so great. Most of, anybody get a motion to adjourn?
Should be in order. Please call roll.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Madrell?
Here.
Mr. Habb?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Marler?
Here.
Mr. Gabb?
Here.
That's a call. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda changes this evening?
Uh, no.
Alright. This time, we'll open up the floor to public comments.
None.
Okay, I can see none. Uh, we've all had a chance to look over the consent agenda, we need a motion to overturn the consent agenda this evening. So move, must one, Mr. Reynolds?
Sir.
Miss Staub? Mr. Madrell, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Uh, we do, we have two. Uh, the Building and Grounds Committee met on Tuesday night, and I know we're gonna talk quite a bit about that and several items, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
I think we can wait and cover it then.
Okay.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be later.
Okay. Alright, and then, sorry, and then, the Strategic Planning Committee met tonight before this meeting, and Mrs. Miller?
Yes, so, we met to go over the, the mission statement. When we had our community-wide planning committee last year, that was one of the suggestions that we had it for a long time, so they wanted us to go over it, make sure it still applied. Everybody on the board, it was supposed to be in a smaller group, so we just did the school board. Um, everybody on the school board, after reviewing, and think that it still applies, and that it still makes sense for our community. However, we don't have an official vision statement, so we're gonna work on that. What we're gonna do is, everybody who attended that meeting last spring will be sent a letter so they can submit their input, and when we get that back, it'll be narrowed down, and then we'll allow the community to vote on what that vision statement will be for our school.
Alright, any questions or comments? Okay. We'll move on to the student numbers report.
Okay, so, winter sports are like starting to wrap up, but there's still like going on, so I have some stuff about that. So, for boys' basketball, um, their current record is 10 to 6, and they play in a tournament at Sparta this week. They finished third place in the holiday tournament they hosted with a 4 to 1 record, and Connor Decker and Luke Irving made the all-tournament team. For girls' basketball, current records for them are 16 to 4 for varsity, 11 to 5 for JV, 4 to 4 for fresh soft. And they finished third place at the Lebanon Christmas Tournament, and have been working on compiling all-time school records for girls' basketball. Specifically, Lily Oliver broke the school record for most 3-pointers made in a game with 8 3-pointers Tuesday night against Javol. Next week, the team will be playing in a tournament in Hillsboro, Missouri, and has conceded second in the tournament. For bowling, um, boys' bowling, Nick Elby bowled a 300 game last Thursday with a 769 series, which is the second highest series for boys. The boys play second in a very hard regional, and all the boys were at least 10 pins above their season average. Boys will bowl in the Alton Sectional on Saturday, and girls' regional is coming up soon. For cheer, cheer is currently competing at the Sparta Tournament. They also have sectionals competition coming up next Saturday at Edwardsville, and in the following week, they'll be hosting a mini cheer camp during halftime of the boys' varsity game. Band and chorus are not too busy right now, they're working on their solo and ensemble contest in early March. Winter Guard has a competition coming up on January 26th at Miss Cuida High School. Um, they're performing their program called Holding On For Tonight at 11:50 a.m., and it's gonna be their first competition of the season. For art, so the art department participates in a grant-funded program called Art Smarts three times a year, um, through the Craft Alliance Center in St. Louis, and it's the same center that sponsored mural in cafeteria. Um, and I go on these, we went two, two Wednesdays ago and yesterday, and the last trip will be in April. And each trip, we're led by professional artists and get to learn basic techniques and history on like a bunch of different topics, including flamework, uh, glass, ceramics, metal smithing, digital design, and fiber arts, so that's really fun. And then Scholar Bowl, Scholar Bowl season has picked up again with matches in the Kehoke Conference and the Metro East Quad League. They will continue at a one to two matches, um, a week through February, concluding with three varsity tournaments. And then finally, Student Council, Student Council helped run the blue, well, helped run the blood drive last Friday, which went really well. Um, I think the final count was 67 units of blood were donated, so that was exciting. And then, we are currently discussing service sales and are starting to prepare for our annual trivia night, and that'll be February 8th, so, exciting stuff, that's all.
Any questions or comments? Good job. Alright, let's move on to the principals' report.
Okay, so, um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Erin Asher, she is a teacher in our English department, and she was recently awarded a $500 grant from Monroe County Electric. Um, there, in your packet is a whole description of what she did. She had to review and discuss a book, why they wanted to use it to class, how it was gonna apply, and she was awarded the money. Included is a picture that was also in the Freeburg Tribune. Um, she just received the, the grant money last week, or the picture, and we're just super excited for the effort that she puts in. She is an outstanding, amazing teacher in the English department. If any of your kids were lucky to have her, all of them are really good, she's just phenomenal, especially with our freshman-level students. She really gets the ball rolling on writing and paragraphs and learning not to plagiarize, and she really is just an outstanding teacher, so congratulations to her. And I'd also like to congratulate JR Runtlinger, and JR is in our Industrial Arts Department, he teaches intro to trades, and he teaches the automotive classes. Um, this is an article that's also in your folder, and I didn't get this in time for the board packet, so here's a copy of it, and, um, he's been nominated, um, as an exemplary CTE teacher. Um, this is a really great thing, it's a regional nomination. Um, he has a chance to go to, um, some curriculum training and an award ceremony, and it's just really awesome that when you have a, a teacher that can be nominated throughout your region, and that, that also comes from outside of our district, and, and they're recognized for the quality of work they do, and, and he's, he's outstanding with the kids down in the automotive, um, department. The intro to trades is more of a freshman-level class, too, where they're starting out learning welding, and they're learning some woodshop, and they're learning just all the basics, and he does a really great job with the students down there. So, congratulations, if you see either one of these teachers, outstanding job. Okay, next thing on the list, I pretty much just wanted to give you a rundown of some things that were coming up for this semester. Um, we are gonna be really busy coming up here very quickly. Um, our guidance counselors, Ann Meyer and John Young, are getting ready to meet with all of the classes. Um, our guidance counselors, Ann Minor and John Young, are getting ready to meet with all of the classes, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and the incoming eighth grade. They're doing the testing for the eighth grade so they can start working on placements for registration. They're gonna be having all-class meetings where they're gonna be sending out the forms to parents, what do they need to take the next year? It is such a busy time, getting all those kids in the meetings, getting all those papers collected, and that is the start of how we then start scheduling classes. What the numbers are gonna look like, how many sections, so on and so forth. So this is, is definitely the start of a very busy time. The eighth grade tours, we do those every year, where the grade schools bring the eighth graders over. Uh, those are gonna occur on the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. Our Student Council, um, showperson them around, answers questions, tours the building, and just gets them ready. It's kind of their first acclamation to what's coming for them. Um, Running Start, um, this is different than what's on your list, I got the date after the fact, but that's gonna be February the fifth. So that is the night, um, that parents and students that are interested in the Running Start program will come here. It's a dual presentation, they, they look at our requirements, and then SWCC goes through what it means, um, to be a part of that program and what the expectations are, so that's gonna be on the fifth. Students that, um, would qualify that will be notified by Mrs. Minor and Mr. Young, so they'll have notice ahead of time, and then they can come to the meeting if they're interested. Freshman Orientation is gonna be Wednesday, March the thirteenth, that is the night where all the parents and the freshman students come. Our teachers are all here, they have the extracurricular fair in the cafeteria. Um, again, that's a really important night, because for a lot of those incoming freshman parents, if they haven't been to some of the games or sporting events, it's their first real kind of look at our school, the first chance to make their first impression. Our teachers are just fabulous that night, and open their door, answer questions, and, and we get, we get moving with the freshmen. Um, National Honor Society Banquet says March fourteenth, but, um, I was contacted today by Mr. Miller, who would like a change, which is most likely the seventh, so I will up that date, update that next time, once we have that set, and I will let parents know that as well. Spring Break, March eighteenth to the twenty-second. Um, P S A T, nine testing, P S A T, ten testing, S A T testing, we're doing it all in one day, and teachers are going to actually have it in their classrooms. Um, they're gonna have to do a training in March. Um, Mrs. Minor and Mr. Young have been going through the process of what we need. Instead of doing this over the course of three days, we're gonna knock it all out in one day. Okay, so it's new for us, we'll see how that goes, hopefully it goes well, but three days of just disruption to the school and the gym and, and people in and out is, it was a lot, so this will be a, a new thing for us, and I'm really hoping that this works out really well. Um, Good Friday Easter Break then, we come up on April nineteenth and twenty-second. We've got prom and post-prom, April twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth. The Spring Music Concert for Course in Band is gonna be May fifth, and then we have our Honors Banquet in May sixth, and then graduation right behind that, May nineteenth. So it seems far away when we're talking about May, but these next couple months are going to fly. Johnsons will be here before too long delivering caps and gowns, the seniors are already starting to think, oh my gosh, have I applied for college? Have I done this? Because I only have a couple months left, so we have a lot going on in a short amount of time. The last thing that's not in your packet, I, um, put a handout, opened letter from the I H S A in your, um, folders or gave it to you. Um, I think this was a really good article, I'm gonna put this out for Letter to Teacheries. Um, it's, it's about, you know, reminding parents that we love their enthusiasm, we love their passion, we love the camaraderie, we love that they come out and support the kids, we want that, we're a great traditional school for that, but we need to probably exercise a little more control when it comes to taking out every emotion we have on the sec, every second on the referees. Um, we've had a number of games where it's been fairly ugly, and it, it's not just our parents, it's, it's parents from other schools too. It's, you know, you've seen it in different gyms and, and different places you've gone to. Um, it is for, remind parents that, you know, when you're standing up screaming at the referee in the middle of a game, that your child is most likely gonna be pretty embarrassed on the, on the field. Um, and the fact that we already have a referee shortage, so the more we're taking out things on the referees, no referees equals no one to referee the games, and that causes a big problem across the board. It's not just one sport, I mean, you can see it everywhere, you know, it's just, I don't know, if, if people just feel like they have a right to say whatever they want, whenever they want, but we, we want parents here, we want fans here, it's not just parents too, I mean, it's kids, it's visiting people. We want this to be the best atmosphere possible, so I am gonna send that out on Teacheries. That's all I got? Thanks.
Any questions or comments?
I have one, uh, I was just thinking about the Running Start with the, uh, program that they're gonna do. Do they, do they bring in any of the kids? Because we've had success and we've had failure. I think it would be good to have one of each, you know, if we could, if we could reach out to some of those kids and, hey, come in and talk, and then that way, if you had a, a student that was thinking about it, you could, they could talk one-on-one, a little bit better than talking directly to the SWCC person or talking directly to, you know, an adult, you know, talk to a kid and find out, boy, this was a lot harder than I thought it was, or this is what I liked, this is what I didn't like, or this didn't work for me, that's why I came back to the high school. I just, just a thought to throw out there, you know, maybe give a little more of a heads up.
I think this next line, yeah, so, no, absolutely, I'll, I'll reach out to some of our kids and see if they wanna come back and talk to them.
Okay, all right, just a thought.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, let's move on to the Superintendent's Report.
All right, I've got, uh, just three different things. Uh, first, uh, a lot of this has to do with, uh, trying to, again, uh, get out the good things that are happening in the high school. Um, we are going to, uh, and I will have to give Smithon and, uh, Mr. Wamser, Dr. Wamser, Mr. Barshak a little credit, we stole from them. But, uh, uh, to put some posts on Facebook about our teachers and our staff, and, so we've put a little questionnaire out to teachers, uh, asking for just some information from them, uh, we have pictures from our, uh, Live Touch we put in the yearbooks. Um, so we're gonna strike, start, start to start, we're going to start doing that soon. And, uh, I, I think it's, it's gonna be a neat way for parents to kind of see, put a picture with the face of the, the teacher that their kids talk about, how much they like the teacher so much, and that they can kind of, uh, you know, get, get some good words out. Uh, the next thing, uh, we're talking about doing, um, and when I say we, I'm talking about Jeff, is, uh, putting together an alumni directory. Uh, this is something that we've talked about over the last couple of years, but, uh, to, we'll, we'll use the, uh, probably the Freeburg Tribune and put together, um, some kind of survey tool that we can ask for people to send their information in, and we compile a directory. Uh, and then we can use that to send out information, there are sub-districts that send out newsletters, because we've got, uh, alumni all over the country, uh, but then, uh, classes that are trying to get a hold of classmates, we can provide them with the year of their classmates and maybe some information, they can get that out. So that, that's something we're gonna try to do as well. And the last thing I had is that, uh, the state of Illinois, uh, when they passed the evidence-based funding, uh, model money this year, they put fifty million dollars into a grant for property tax relief, so we, um, have applied for that. Um, now, don't get your hopes up just yet, but, uh, Freeburg could, uh, see a little over eight hundred thousand dollars in tax relief if we get the grant. I went to a conference today, P M A, which is a investment company that puts on some really good financial, uh, sessions, and they said that only the top twenty schools in the, of the top list of schools in the, in the state will get this, and then, I don't know how many tier-one schools there are, but we're a tier-two school. So the likelihood that we're gonna get this is probably not great, but if you don't apply, you don't get a chance. So if we would get the grant, we'd be notified January thirty-first, uh, and then we would have till March thirtieth to decide if we actually wanted the grant, because there are benefits and drawbacks from the grant, because it could lower your money you would get from the state. So, uh, well, if we get it, we can talk about it in February, if we don't get it, I'll let you know in February as well. So that's all I have, unless anybody had any questions.
Any questions or comments? We'll move on to old business then.
Um, first is, uh, action from Strategic Planning, which there really isn't, Angie kind of talked about it, so. I don't think there's any action.
Okay.
Uh, the next item I had was on, uh, the consolidation of curriculum and audit discussion. We talked about it a little bit, uh, uh, last month, uh, and then, since two of the districts, two of the four districts have, uh, decided not to, uh, participate or, or their, their desire is not to move forward with consolidation, um, the two districts that are left are us and District Seventy. Um, I kind of expressed some thoughts that, uh, I felt like we needed to concentrate on curriculum, um, that that is something I think the four districts, uh, would be willing to look at, um, and to move forward with that. But if, you know, if there was any board members, or I'm sorry, if the board wanted to move forward with a discussion with District Seventy about the two districts consolidating, then I think that's important for, for me to know, to move forward. Otherwise, I, I wanna concentrate my time on the curriculum aspect and work with the other superintendents on, um, somebody to come in and look at the curriculum and, and kind of give us an outside opinion of, of what we're doing well, what we can improve on, and how we can improve and move forward. So I'm kind of leaving it up to you guys to, uh, decide, um, if you want me to move forward or concentrate on the curriculum.
Okay, open it up for questions and comments.
I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see where we're gonna bring them, but I don't think we should stop. I still think we should look at seventy and see what the possibility is. Basically, we're a little bit close. I don't see the disadvantage in completing the study on that. Even if the tax re-engaging, I think folks could do that. But we can keep trying and do what's right for the taxpayers. Whether it works out or not, I don't know, but I don't see the, the bad side of the study.
So even, can we do ten?
No. No, we'd have to go back through the process. My understanding, they only gave us the hybrid with Smithon, so we gotta go back and have them re-look at the situation and then come back to this.
My, my thought is our first, my first step would be to reach out to seventy to ask their interest, um, you know, in, in getting together and discussing it. You know, if, if they're interested and the board's interested, then we can do that. If they're not interested, then I guess we consolidate with ourselves.
And I think it's just serious stuff in itself, but.
Oh, it is, it is.
So as far as you and Tommy or Mark have, have really shut down and kick that around?
No, I mean, it's just, um, you know, once, once Smithon made the decision to bow out, we got together and said, what, what's our next step? And, you know, our next step, we thought was, was, you know, the study said curriculum was the most important thing to come out of that. So, well, how can we address the curriculum? And so, uh, one of the superintendents said, why don't we look at bringing somebody in? And so, we all kind of thought that would be a good idea. Um, you know, Tommy and I have had informal talks, but nothing, you know, um, you know, no. And that's kind of the purpose of this item, is to kind of get direction from the board, you know? Because I, I, I know there are some people that are in favor, and I know there's some people that aren't in favor. But I think to move forward and to have, you know, just to reach out to them, I, I think I need direction from the whole board, you know?
Are any of the concerns that, um, that Smithon raised, are those concerns that we would potentially have also, or no?
I think our community all pays, so one of the big things was the, the tour, and the issues with that. I think our community bears that, um, responsibility anyway as taxpayers, I mean, we all support that same district. I don't know that that's our valid concern. Oh, well, that you're there.
All right, just, just the Freeburg residents, we spent this in St. Elmore residence. In our school building.
Yeah. I guess as a Freeburg resident, I didn't think of it that way. So, so we wouldn't be taking that on.
And that's what the study would want us to try and murder. So we should consider. I'd like, I'd like hear what you said about still getting together and talking about curriculum and, and getting things running in the country there, uh, irregardless of what happens. I mean, that's, that's, uh, a good kind of a point, you know, in terms of preparation for the, for the, uh, great schools coming to that school. And that makes all kinds of things.
Yeah, if we did a study with, if we did a study with seventy, would we have to start completely from scratch and pay that amount again?
I don't know, and, and honestly, I think that's probably a step or two down the road. I think the first step is for us to formally ask, are they interested in discussions? Before we would even say, yes, we're interested, because that's kind of what we did, you know, together, is we said, hey, we, you know, we're, we're, are we interested, and they, and we all said, yeah, we think we're interested, so let's go ahead and do the study, and then, that's how that went. So I think the, the first step would be, you know, the board directs me to go to Tommy and say, I think our board is interested in discussions. Is your board interested in discussions? Because if they're not, then it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to start reaching out to consultants and paying more money and things like that.
I don't think we have to do that in terms of curriculum.
It's very much.
Curriculum seems to be an easy fix. I'm not certain that any expenditure of money to continue a study, uh, would, would be worthwhile. Come back and, and get a document similar to what we got, um, from the, the board. There was enough direction, I think, in the, in the documentation that we have, uh, that we could proceed for without any further expenditure of monies. Uh, we certainly can, uh, get a committee, get, uh, actual costs upon our expected cost or savings from different aspects of, of the consolidation, that, uh, you're not gonna get anything new from facilities, you're not gonna get anything new from curriculum. Um, so the only thing that you have is, is teacher costs and, uh, what synergies and, and that you could, you could gain by having a larger, larger group. I can't see where going back and entertaining and pushing another six months, uh, to produce a, another document of just two schools and, and similar information would be worthwhile.
I, I agree that we should go on with the, you know, curriculum, try to get, keep going with that, but as far as consolidating, I'm still not convinced that there's any financial benefit of us consolidating with the great school. So, I think with that, I, I'd say profit.
Angie, what are your thoughts?
Um, definitely curriculum, that, that makes sense. As far as consolidation, I tend to agree with Dennis and Dean. It doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to go back and do another study. We've got most of the information we need, doesn't seem to point to just two districts and saving a whole lot of money. Um, and would be bringing the, um, great school teachers up to a higher, um, pay standard. We might use more administrators, but I don't think that balances out. There would be benefits with the bus garage and some of the issues we have with, uh, separate bus drivers and owning separate buses and things like that, but again, that's, that's another cost. I don't, I don't think we have enough, I think we have enough information to say that I don't think it's gonna be enough benefit to go through it.
So at this time, do we wanna just focus on trying to get together with the other school districts and work on a joint curriculum? And worry about consolidation at a later date, see if, now is not the right time without Smithon being involved and move on? At this point, we agree with her? Okay.
I would agree, I would actually agree.
Okay.
Based on the fact that I didn't have to make one.
Sure.
And they changed their mind.
Sure.
And they understand what the state was talking about and adjusting the boundaries, take care of their needs for some of the building, but.
Yeah, we can always come back to it. Table, not so soon. Very delicious. Have you reached out to them about working on curriculum?
Okay. Next item.
Um, we're gonna drop down to item F first and then come back to these other items, I talked to Doug. Um, there is a method to my madness, so, um, the next item is more informational. Um, it's talking about the, uh, replacement of the bus, um, the old bus garage roofs, replacing the windows, updated tuck pointing. Um, so I'll kind of give you a little bit of background, the, uh, we had a pre-bid meeting. Uh, Trempco is basically acting as our general contractor, doing all the, uh, the, the bid work and all of the, um, engineering, uh, drawings and things like that. Um, that, those numbers should be to us in time to look at them for the February meeting. Um, in the meantime, at the Building and Grounds, um, we had some discussion. In the meantime, at the building and grounds, we had some discussion about that. I don't know if you want to jump in or if you want me to kind of talk about some of the information that I've found in the last couple of days? So, so I talked to our architect. So after the building and grounds meeting, we talked about the whole structure of the building. We focused a lot on the bus garage and what could be done with the bus garage. And the first thing is, it's a very viable building that we need to keep in good shape and we need to do these improvements. How they're done or what the actual type of roof and things is kind of another discussion we can have shortly. But, since then, we've had discussions internally with administration about what we can use it for. So, we brought this up a little bit at the building and grounds, and one of the ideas is to create classrooms in that building. We have a couple viable options. It's, the building is split into two parts. The larger part is, it's got five garage door bays. It's probably about sixty-five feet or so wide and about forty-some odd feet deep. You could, with a fair amount of work, you could split it up into multiple classrooms, or we could take the entire section and turn it into something else. And so the idea that I like and think is, we could probably fairly easily put that into an ag classroom, lab, and where they could hold the ag classes in there. They could have enough room to have a lab. A lot of the ag programs will have like ag mechanics where they can bring in, you know, a tractor and work on that. There's plenty of room in there. It would need some upgrades. So, Dennis has started to look around and try to, you know, pick up some numbers from some local people, what it would cost. I've reached out to our architect, and he thinks that we can get that done fairly reasonable. The issue that we have pressing for the administration is, we're out of rooms. And next year, if we have the staff that we've talked about adding, we're gonna have to have somebody float, which is the end of the world. But we also have the issue that the ag classroom right now is nowhere near big enough, and there really isn't a space in the building right now that could hold what the ag needs. That class, that old bus garage is on that side of the building. The greenhouse is on that side of the building. It makes a lot of sense to use that building for that structure. So that's kind of the idea of why it's important to get these other things, which I don't think anybody disagrees that we don't want to get these, the roof and the windows and the tuck pointing done. Do you want to add anything now? I just feel like I'm rambling.
You talking about the halls too, the work you did with Dennis?
Looking at the hall?
You talking about putting the hall out?
So, no, I haven't, I mean, to me, you're, what our discussion, Jill and Lori and I's discussion the last couple of days is, can we get it done? Can we get that building ready to have ag in there in August? And to do that, talking to Dennis, talking to the architect, it's very feasible. You know, it'd be a lot of work, we'd have to coordinate, but it's feasible. The hallway would probably, I mean, it wouldn't get done. The cost of it would be, I don't know what the cost would be. But, that would take a lot more. And the ag goes outside right now. I mean, they're outside. We could put up some, some kind of fencing if we wanted to. I actually walked around the ag teacher after school and looked at it, kind of talked about what I'm talking about now. Actually, since then, he's got on the ag side and there's a ten thousand dollar grant available for facility improvements for ag. So I mean, I'd have till next week to fill it out. But, but there are, there could be some money available too for that kind of thing. So I think, I think the hallway would have to wait realistically. But the idea then would be to extend that south hallway out a little bit and possibly connect with that ag room if we wanted to have them go stay in the building. And I understand the safety and all that, but, I mean, honestly, they're outside. One of the classes is outside almost the whole time. They walk from the north end. So, so let me kind of run through the information. So one of the questions was, the type of roof that the Trempco is recommending is a built-up roof that has multiple layers, that has rock and tar on it. And so, a couple of questions I had was, given to me was, is a membrane roof better? Should we look at putting a membrane roof on instead? Or even putting a pitch roof on with, like, a metal roofing? And so, talking with Mike Stop, he says that most new schools put membrane roofs on, that the metal roof is, you would be adding structure. And once you add structure, then you're basically, it's looked at as putting more in addition. You're putting a different roof on, there's all different kinds of regulations. He said there's more back, behind the scene costs when you do that. That roof is expensive with the metal. The guy from Trempco says that the built-up roofs are lasting thirty-five years, is what he's telling me, and that the membrane roofs are about a fifteen-year roof, that they're susceptible to hail damage. I know that our rock and tar roofs are, have lasted a decent time. We do have a fair amount of patches on the membrane. He said we could do whatever he wants. If we want us to bid it out, he can reach out. The only thing he asked is that we, you know, are serious about doing the project and making sure we want to look at this because it's more work for the bidders to do. But he said we could do that. The other thing I asked him today when I spoke with him was, he had mentioned doing interior work under this co-op. The co-op can reach out to HVAC people and get bids on and putting heating and air conditioning in that building as well. That would all fall underneath that co-op, so we would be guaranteed the best price. So those are all things he can have done, but we need to make a decision. I'm pushing us here. We probably need to make a decision if that is the viable use for that building. We would, I don't have us using the other side right now. That would still be open, depending on what we do there or other options that may be available. The three bays on this side that the janitors use. So right now, the only side that I'm looking to turn into the ag facility would be those five bays closest to the building. Correct.
How many rooms would that open up for us here in this?
One.
Just one?
But that would Monday for one floater, and then we still next year would have no floors.
We would have the floors, plus in addition, our ag, we've got thirty students in. This is one of the smallest classrooms in the building. And in order for ag to really function the way it needs to function, they need a lab. And there really isn't the space for them to have a dedicated lab. They could share a lab. But, I mean, we're getting to the point, the ag program is growing and bursting at the seams. Almost all those classes are twenty-five, twenty-seven plus. You know, I see this move as actually being very beneficial to the ag program and, you know, really kind of enhancing that program. And it also helps out that it gives them enough room.
Those five bays that you're, that would just be one lab, one large lab, that space is, it's not large enough for two classrooms?
Oh, yes, absolutely it would be. But, they would, I mean, my thought is, just looking at it, they would have a dedicated spot where they could put desks, they could put a board in, then they could have a dedicated spots where they could set up lab tables and, you know, have their lab work. And they could have another spot for like an ag mechanics or things like that. And then Dennis, we don't use that greenhouse that's attached to the south end. I think it would be possible to move that to the side of the garage, then you would have that other, I don't know what it's called, lean-to type greenhouse that they could use.
And then the only other, I mean, we have tractors, we have equipment. I think there would definitely be an need of space for the janitors to use. If I'm not mistaken, I think visiting teams also use that during, are they still going into there?
The visiting teams have always used our visitor locker rooms.
Oh, okay.
Our team has now started going to the grade schools multi-purpose.
Oh, good.
Because it was not a, because they use that, those other, there's three bays on the other side. They use that, set up tables and chairs. And it just wasn't a very good setup.
Okay, good, I would agree with that. And then just looking at this, I have to see particulars, but this struck me as very high, a very high bid for roof and windows, but just that the building is not that large. So, but they're thinking that it's going to be significantly lower?
Yes. And again, it's a bid. We have the option of saying no. If we think they come in too high, we can say no. The tuck pointing, he estimated thirty, once they looked at it, he thinks it's going to be substantially lower than that. This price does include the asbestos abatement. So that was a separate cost that we had before, on top of his estimates of twenty thousand dollars, they thought.
And what do they think is asbestos in that building?
The caulk on the windows and doors are asbestos.
Twenty thousand dollars to remove caulk off windows?
And again, I understand, and that's what these companies do, is they estimate high so that when the bids come in, the board doesn't go, wait, he says twenty and you're giving a bid for forty? So they estimate high.
I think we should move forward with it. I like the idea of the ag program there by not putting in a wall for a second classroom. That's going to save us some costs down the road. If we decide that we want to change and do something else, we could put another wall in there. That way we have a viable building ready to go. And avoid that floater, if you had this done in time, that would be awesome. That's my feeling.
Just a quick question. It is completely our building, isn't it?
It is. We own ten feet past the building, something like that.
I agree with you.
The only thing I would add on that, I agree with moving forward, I just think we'd dislike the board about putting in the air conditioning roofs if we can. I would do a bid to membrane, because I'm shocked with the fifteen-year warranty on the membrane for a lot of them. I think I've won five, they want these a lot of times. I don't understand that.
And again, I just, I spoke to him four thirty-nine. So he said he can give us documentation, so I'll ask for that. And that way, we could have both bids, and then we're supposed to be able to have this all done by, all the bidding done by February. And that way, we can, then we can choose what we want.
All right, what are your thoughts?
I like the homework you've done with that, and it sounds like feasible, to solve some problems in the near future.
Dennis?
It's a good use of this space and a great way to get back into, into a final gift.
I agree with you.
You can move on.
Okay, well, let's.
I'll make the motion.
And we don't, I mean.
Just for the bid process, you've got that already?
We don't need to make any motions. The only other thing is, I will, I will call Joe back at Trempco. I will ask him to include the HVAC as a line item. So that the HVAC and the tuck pointing will be a line item. So we can approve those with it or decide not to. We can toss those out if we don't want them. And then he will, I'll have bid hold for those types of roofs. But then, once, so the idea then is, once we get done with that in February, in order to get the rest of this done, I probably need to reach out to Mike Stop and have him start working on what we need on the inside to make sure we meet all the requirements that we, you know, we have to have a certain number of doors, we have to have the right lighting, emergency exits, all these things that are required by state. He can put that all together, and then he can put a bid package together, we can kind of do the bid process, and then hopefully get that put together, maybe get that done by March. That gives us time to get people in, to get it done if we're going to get this going. There's not sprinklers. And so we would need to either decide if we want sprinklers or if we're required to have sprinklers. So we would have to, and I talked to Jeff Walt today, we would have to, you know, connect all of our phone lines and our internet and all the emergency intercom, I mean, all that would have to also be connected, which shouldn't be too difficult because of the proximity of the school. We could probably easily go underground.
And then aesthetically from the outside, I'm assuming the five-bay doors would be, I mean, you had tie it in with some, those would be, it would look more like an educational space instead of a bus garage.
So the back is going to, remember how big the windows are? We're gonna raise the windows up so that they're higher than what people can see in, more of a safety factor and limit the number of windows. So those two sections will be rebuilt. And the front will probably leave one door bay operational, and the rest will close in. I don't know exactly how we'll do that, but, yeah. I swirled it now after the HVAC project last summer, we weren't doing anything this summer. Now we're doing all kinds of stuff.
Good. All right. All right, C?
So then, I think, looking at the next, I believe it's three items on here. C is about the gym sound suppression, and that was the products I brought them. I think we could put that on hold and look at doing that maybe next year to try to get that kind of stuff done. The same thing with the student lockers and the student parking lot. Talking about just the gym suppression, Jeff's done a really nice job of putting a sound system in, a mixing board that I think, you know, Dean's been to the games, I think it's improved it a little bit.
When did he put it in?
It was never, he put it in before basketball started. Volleyball was tough, basketball's been a little bit better. And then the student lockers, we had talked about replacing those student lockers and had budgeted a hundred thousand out of that working cash bond sale we had last year. I think we can wait on that and then have that money available for the cost to renovate that bus garage, our kind of, our cost, that would not come under health by safety.
And then the question with that, that wouldn't be what we're going to do in the band room?
That's separate. I'm talking about just the small student lockers. That we could look at that after we get done, see what money's available from that. And I, you know, I don't even know what the HVAC and electrical upgrades, and there's some concrete work has to be done. And I don't know what those costs are going to be, but I would, I think that priority-wise is above the lockers and the sound system. And then lastly, the student parking lot. I had mentioned with the addition of the new parking, staff parking lot, we opened up thirty-some odd student parking spots. As of the turn of the school year, or the calendar year, we had thirty-eight spots open. Since then, we've had probably six to eight students pick up parking passes that have spots. So, I think we have, I mean, we have a surplus of spots. I think we can wait one more year to look at putting parking in that green lot. In addition to the extra cost that I think we need to also look at of curbing on Emily Street that's not there now, to add that to the parking lot, which would increase the price. Again, I think priority-wise, the bus garage is above that. So I think those three things, I would like to table those for later on. Maybe revisit it after this is done and see what we can do possibly next year.
Any questions or comments on that?
Okay, let's move on to new business.
Nope. Are we on new business? Okay, new business.
New business.
All right, so, in the bus garage, right now it is a collecting spot for all of the items that are unwanted. And so what I would like to do is to And, uh, so what I would like to do is to have the board's permission to get rid of all that surplus, uh, whether we, uh, can sell it, or scrap it, or throw it away. Kinda have you guys give me the thumbs up to trust me not to make that decision.
I'll move that, uh. Expose all excess school equipment as deemed appropriate.
Second.
Okay. And B?
Um, I originally had a school calendar on here to be approved, uh, since the beginning of the year, the, uh, both house, uh, houses of the legislature have passed a new law that reinstates the old law, that we need a three-hundred-minute day to constitute a school day. So that's gonna change our parent-teacher conferences that we had talked about, so, uh, I surveyed the staff, over eighty percent of the staff would like, if that law does go into effect, would like to go back to the old system of having two evening parent-teacher conferences, and then have that. The new law didn't allow that, so, instead of approving that tonight, uh, there's no rush on approving the calendar. Uh, all three districts, I think, are thinking the same on the calendar, and have pretty much agreed on all the dates that we need to agree on. Uh, so, I just kinda wanna put that out there, uh, as the change, and then tell you that we're probably gonna table this, I would like to table this until February or above.
Any comments? Everybody okay to table it? I'm C.
Okay, um, put in here, um, multiple upgrades that we have to our, uh, electronic infrastructure. The camera system that we, that we, uh, put in, Jeff and I actually worked on that about a dozen years ago, uh, to upgrade that. Uh, the, he calls it an NVR, I call it a DVR, but basically things that records all the videos and stores them, is, uh, starting to lose functionality, um, and, and not useful. Uh, we need to replace it, it is fairly expensive, it's about an eighteen-thousand-dollar, uh, item. Jeff is, is, does a very good job of, of reaching out to multiple vendors to try to get the absolute best price, um, and I, I trust him completely on that, so, um, that is below the twenty-five-thousand-dollar threshold, so, um, that's the first item. The next item is the access points, and these are all the little boxes on the outside of the building that we use to get in the building and secure it. Uh, that system is also old, it's about the same age, um, it needs an upgrade, um, that is, I don't know if I have a price on here, but it, that one's about, uh. Oh, I do, I had an extra, it's a bullet point, it's about a seven-thousand-dollar price tag. Uh, what it will do though, the new system will then, uh, connect the, the video and the doors together, so that if we have something going on, we're gonna be able to match up the times, which now we can, they're on separate systems, um, plus it'll be more updated, it'll be supported, which the old system is not. So again, he'll be looking through that, both of those items above, uh, would be able to be paid out of lease levy, so they would not come out of the building and grounds, um, per se. It is out of building grounds, but it's out of the lease levy, uh, that we passed last month. Uh, the next is our internet fiber, uh, Jeff, uh, has told me that much of the building is about fifteen years old, uh, and that several pairs of the strands are starting to fail. Uh, we're starting to see some issues with losing, uh, wifi functionality, um, we're fairly limited, um, in the wifi, and so, that needs to be upgraded, he's been looking at bids. Uh, this would qualify under the E-Rate Category Two money, that that's a forty percent matching money, so, the twenty-thousand-dollar cost, total cost would, uh, come in somewhere around twelve thousand, he said he's still working on several different bids that he's getting from folks to, um, to run all new cable, all new fiber optics. Then the, uh, our contract is expiring with our internet access, uh, people, and our phone contract, and so, he is interested in staying with, um, Ever, or Everclear, Clearwave, sorry about that, he's interested in staying with Clearwave, which is our current internet. Um, he, and he also wants to increase the speed from two hundred megabytes per second to five hundred. Uh, right now, we're seeing our, uh, internet usage being maxed out quite often, with as much as we're using the Chromebooks. By combining both of those into one, they would, both would qualify for, uh, another E-Rate program, which gives us forty percent off. So by doing that, combining the two, and increasing, it would only increase our monthly, uh, cost for about a hundred and thirty dollars. So those are three things that we're, or four things that we're looking at doing, um, and so that is something I'm interested in the board knowing, and unless there's an objection, I'm planning to move forward.
I think all the items seem very important to get done, so, I definitely think we should keep moving forward on it.
Any other thoughts?
Only, only on the, on the internet, is that, with the close proximity, is, is there any possibility of sharing the internet with seventy? On the, you're looking at, uh, going from two hundred to five hundred, I don't know what they have, they have the same provider or anything, uh, I don't know if it's wired, if, you know.
I could ask, but I doubt it, I mean, I, I think it's like two homes sharing the same internet connection, I don't.
You'd probably write wire, that could be done.
Yeah. I, I'm just not sure, I mean, I could ask, but I, I'm guessing.
Okay, let's move on to item D.
Item D, uh, this is, uh, something that, uh, we've talked about with the local police, and it's a big recommendation they have with our safety. Uh, and that is to, uh, implement student IDs starting next year. The, the staff has these IDs, we use these to open the doors, um, what we would use for the students would be something similar, probably a little heavier carrier, uh, than this. It would have their picture on it, but then we could also put barcode, that they'd use for the lunches, and they could use to check out library books, so it would be functional. The, the safety people are interested, uh, because of identification purposes, they would like every student to have that, in case there was an, an emergency, they could identify, uh, the students. Um, in doing this, the cost to bring in a printer and all of the, uh, the supplies is about a four-thousand-dollar cost. That's enough to make about fifteen-hundred badges, the, uh, we think that Live Touch, who is our yearbook, they may be able to help us out a little bit with that, we're still trying to get that answered, so it could be less. So I'm interested in moving forward. Uh, one of the things that's, uh, also important about the timing, is Ms. Crunk is gonna start working on the handbook, and if we're gonna have IDs, we're probably gonna have to put some language in the handbook about that, and I believe the, the board expressed interest in having, uh, IDs brought back.
Any questions or comments, or do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Mike says we're gonna move on here, start with you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Aye.
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 Motion passes. Item D.
Uh, the curriculum committee has been meeting, uh, quite often this first semester, um, there are three, uh, new courses that we would like to have approved tonight. Um, again, the timing is important, because they're gonna start, like Bill said, to get into the, the meeting, they're gonna start with, uh, curriculum decisions, um, for kids. First is an introduction to band, so this course, the, the description is listed there, but this course is basically for, uh, kind of the novice, uh, or the beginner band, uh, person that would like to learn how to play a musical instrument, maybe isn't interested in the marching portion, and, uh, because we are bringing our band program, uh, full-time next year, we would add this one class, and that would fill out their, um, day, because they would have two hours, uh, for sectionals where they would be, uh, working with students. Uh, the second class is a coding two class, we, we introduced a coding class two years ago, year ago? Do you remember, is this the second year?
This is the first year.
First year, so, uh, it's been very popular, so the idea then is to expand coding, to get more details in coding, to look more into languages, um, this is a big push. Uh, this is something that our council have come back, and, and colleges are asking for this. Uh, and then the third is a statistics class, um, this class would be a dual-credit course through SWIC. Um, so this class is designed for the upper-level student that is not going for a engineering math background type of degree. And, but they, they would like to have a dual-credit class, the, the, for that benefit, but it would also help them in college, because a lot of students, uh, that are not, not in a math background degree, like an engineering, um, degree, uh, need a statistics, a statistics course in college. And so this would give them a really good base for that course in college, so this kind of is gonna be a parallel to the AP Calc class. So the kids that, you know, are taking the AP Calc, they may not be wanting to go into engineering, but they're gonna take the AP Calc because of the, the dual credit, you know, the benefits of that. They can now take the statistics class, because that class would probably be more beneficial for them, to be more productive in their college career. So those are the three courses, uh, that the curriculum committee has brought forward, and is asking the board to approve.
Did, and that isn't a typo, it's through SWIC, not SLU.
It is.
We don't have any other, uh, dual credits through SWIC, do we?
Not anymore. No. So this, uh, and, and I, Dennis, I apologize, I, do you remember, is, is there a fee or not? I don't remember, like, the, uh, eighteen-eighteen class, they have to pay a fee to get the credit? I, I can find that out.
I mean, that is my question, is, it, it just struck, I thought, oh, that's a typo, you know, SLU.
It's through SLU, it's through, it's through SWIC. Uh, SLU did not have a statistics, we talked about a college algebra, or a statistics, or a combination, and reached out to SLU, SLU does not have a dual-credit statistics. Uh, but then we also reached out to SWIC, and they do, and one of our teachers, um, is approved to teach it. And so the, the math department actually discussed this first, then they brought that to the curriculum committee as a recommendation.
Any other questions or comments?
And this particular stat class has been articulated with schools that people are gonna go to, Edrosville, Kendrick, ULI, many cities, it's been articulated.
So, they're, they, they passed a law, I don't know, years ago, that any classes that, that are dual-credit through SWIC are supposedly transferable to any in-state college, any Illinois in-state college.
And the prerequisite for this stat class is?
Algebra II.
Okay. I, I'm just, you know, wanting to make sure that that's all the way, that's right.
Yeah.
Statistics, I'd have to go to a competition, have a couple of prerequisites, but, um, I'm not so sure that it might not be like college.
So our, our college algebra is now a junior-level class, but if you, if you come in and you take geometry as a freshman, then you would take algebra II and then trig pre-Calc. So those kids could go that route, they would have a little bit of trig, a little bit of, of calc, and then they could go into either AP Calculus, or they could go into Statistics.
Just to make sure that that's a school transition.
Right, if, if, kind of either route, it, it, it should work out pretty well.
Do we have a motion to, or do we have to say?
So, to approve these three classes.
Okay.
Subway.
A motion, we have a second. All those payers say aye.
Aye.
May opposed? Non-motion passes. Right enough.
All right, this is the, uh, uh, month where we pick the board member that is going to be on the student-parent handbook committee. Uh, that committee meets several times with Ms. Crunk and, and multiple other stakeholders, and they make recommendations to the board for changes to the handbook.
I move.
We, you know, if, if we have a volunteer, we don't have a motion, unless we have multiple people, then we can vote.
Was there, was there a second personal one to do that?
Okay, Angie is.
Okay.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you, Angie. I am G.
All right, uh, I had a question about, uh, at our athletic trainer at underclass, uh, games, we had a, uh, a student that sprained an ankle at an underclass game, so, uh, the trainer wasn't there, so it was brought up, so did a little bit of, uh, research on this, and, uh, we have a contract with ATI, and it says in there that the athletic trainer will work, uh, between fifteen to twenty hours at a rate of twenty-nine dollars an hour. Uh, so, since I wrote this and sent this out, I've got more information, so our athletic trainer does not necessarily work fifteen or twenty hours. They work the hours that they need to work, and they go to the JV and the varsity matches, and they come in and they do, um, athletic checks a couple times a week. This arrangement was kinda worked out years ago, with a previous, um, athletic director. Coach Law, our current athletic director, has reached out to, uh, the area schools, and except for Muskuta and the Clinton County Schools, almost everybody has the same policy, where the athletic director doesn't go to the underclass games, those coaches have that athletic director's phone number. They're, uh, kind of, uh, skilled in, uh, a little bit of first aid, for instance, if this person sprained his ankle, so, they stop the game, they get ice on the ankle, and they tell mom or dad, you probably need to have him checked out. If the athletic trainer was there, he would have put ice, put ice on it, brought him over, filled out a piece of paper, and told mom and dad, you probably need to get him checked out. Uh, the athletic trainer is at underclass, uh, events such as soccer and, and football, where there's more of a chance of a head injury. Uh, so, the, uh, the cost, I think I had in here, you know, it was about seventeen-hundred dollars to have them come to every single underclass game. I don't think we need them at every underclass game, um, I, I would also be concerned of asking, because right now we have one trainer, all of our coaches is very familiar with the trainer, he does a great job, um, I don't wanna stretch that person too thin, and, and, uh, you know, to ask them to be at all those events. So I don't know what thoughts you have. Any thoughts, sir?
Do most of the coaches, um, have the ability to, to rap, or to, to kind of address some of those things? I mean, if you get ice, you know, you can, you can take that, hit that man up, I mean, just they're gonna be, you know, close to.
I mean.
Till they get to some place.
They, they tape ankles if, if the person's not there, um, I mean, I, I coached, I taped ankles, I mean, we didn't have a trainer that, that did that. So, I mean, they're, they're not gonna have the expertise of the athletic trainer, I mean, it's just, it's just not gonna be the same, uh, but the, the injuries that are happening in most of these events are sprains and, you know, contusion here, contusion there, and those things, you know, again, they're gonna be handled fairly the same with the athletic trainer and the coach, and he's on call, so he has his phone, and we can get ahold of him, he's listening, Smith, and he could be here fifteen minutes.
He averages, I mean, for the times, it's something like that, you know?
Oh, I mean, we have probably, I would say, three or four a month at least, that we have a kid sprain his ankle. I mean, but it happens to PE too, so, and they put ice on it, and they bring it to the nurse, and they call mom or dad, say, we probably need to get checked out.
How many years have we been doing it the current way? I mean, how long have we had?
Probably six or seven years at least.
And how many times have we had it come up where it's a big concern, he's not there, do we, not there when it happens?
I don't remember the last time.
What catastrophic injuries?
Um, I mean, we, we've had, you know, we've had kids that have fallen hit the head, you know, and so, you know, we, we had ambulances, I mean, most of the time that's been at football and soccer, I don't know whether soccer's an ambulance, I know we've had foot.
But even if we had a. But even if we had a, even if we had a catastrophic injury.
You come down from, you know, like the pro basketball player lands wrong and breaks the ankle. The trainer's not gonna do anything. But, you gotta stabilize it, hold him there until the ambulance gets here. And I think that would be the same.
My thought process, I'll just, I mean, being at that game and seeing the injury and then seeing, uh, uh, kind of, uh, what appeared to be a lack of, uh, of how to go about, I mean, the answer is he did a five bu, gallon bucket of water and put his foot in it, uh, in ice water, in the shoe. That's what any coach would have done. Uh, his father ended up carrying him off the, physically carrying him off the floor and with instructions to take him to, uh, to a hospital. And it just seemed to me, okay, let's, let's, I've never noticed the athletic trainer at any of the, the JV events. I, I, I will contest your, uh, your statement that he attends JV or underclass soccer events. I, but I've never noticed it. I've noticed it at, at varsity, not so much at JV soccer. I think it's important in any context sport, uh, to, to have it. I agree with every other, other thing. You showed me the contract. I read it. Uh, it was a different, uh, I had a different, I assumed that we had contracted for him for fifteen to twenty hours. And then he goes to three hours after school. That'd be about three hours a day, almost every day that you, you could attend, but that's, we only pay for what we use him. So it would be an added cost. It's a different, it's a different thing. Uh, I think the potential for injury is just as serious at underclass events as it is at varsity, uh, events. If you're playing the same sport, whether or not it's freshman football or sophomore football or, or basketball. That's not to say that the need is substantiated to have him there. Uh, perhaps training, a little training for a coaching staff could be, uh, it could be either done by him or another professional to give him some guidance on, okay, here's how to proceed if you get this type of injury. If that's an injury, call an ambulance, but, um, I don't know. I just hadn't seen him at any underclass events. Uh, on the soccer side, I don't know.
The training thought is a, is a good idea though, to very easily, we might be able to have a, a one-day seminar for all of our coaches to attend. And we bring in somebody from sports medicine or something. When I coached to, since I didn't have a teaching degree, I had to take a two-day class and half of the one class was just on, on medical and, and minor sprains and injuries, things like that. But I coached for eight years and we didn't have to re-up that. And I think that would have been beneficial, maybe every four years you have to, things change. But no, that's a good idea that maybe if, uh, we could do something like that, uh, over the summer, you know, have a, have a one-day, reach out to the sports medicine people and see if they'd come in for some basic training.
I'm sure probably.
Absolutely. I, I think that's a great idea.
And then, then, other than that, it's just a decision on, uh, what guidance we give. If covering only the varsity girls in basketball games and the football, he travels with the team to away games on the varsity level. So that, that, that's done, called for in the contract, um, uh, for, for the JV freshman sophomore football or basketball or. Is that, that's just not covered?
The JV and freshman football now, sorry.
Home.
Home, home, okay. He travels with the varsity.
Yes.
And at the away games, do those teams have an athletic trainer there? Well, they've got, they usually have an ambulance there, don't they? Uh, we do not, we do not have an ambulance typically at underclass football. Of course, how do we get to soccer? No, it's just football. We're covered at home. The only ones we aren't covered at home right now are the, you're saying the freshman soccer and the freshman, by that, basketball?
Well, I don't, I, I, I think, I, if I'm not mistaken, you can check the attendance. Uh, and you, you attend as a supervisor role on those JV games also. My recollection is not too much attendance or any attendance at the JV soccer, um, and certainly not at, at, at the basketball, uh, levels. But I agree that you can burn somebody out, um, have them to attend something, any sort of event night at the school.
Typically the soccer JV's after and he, I, I've always seen him stay. I don't remember him leaving JV soccer because he's there. The varsity, our JV basketball girls and boys, he normally gets there, um, second quarter usually because then the varsity needs the refs and things. And he does the wrapping for them. So he's there for at least half, more likely three quarters of JV.
About the same as you, or?
I think the training's a good idea, um, for the, for the coaches. I don't, it doesn't seem to be a problem for most of the time. I don't know that we need to, um, enlist him to come to every single game. That's what's in the sense of.
This is one of these subjects I can go either way on. I guess one question I have, a concern about, present gentleman, uh, spread an hip thin. But is it possible that somebody else would come in on these, at these games instead of him?
I'm sure, yes.
Cause, I mean, the way I look at it, I mean, it was seventeen hundred bucks, I mean. To me, that's kind of a cheap insurance policy to have somebody here and.
That's just the winter. So that was just the, that's all I checked was the winter.
It's just the ba, basically the basketball.
So you're probably, I mean, baseball, if you're gonna do baseball now, then you're talking probably double that. How many more games in baseball? And then.
Does he do varsity baseball?
What's that?
Does he do varsity baseball now?
Yeah.
He does?
Yeah. He, he goes between baseball and softball.
All right. Well, the contract actually is written that if there's more than one event, there's a softball game and there's a, uh, of a, I don't know, there's also a track meet or something that at the direction of the, um, athletic director, he will either attend or split his time between the events.
So he, he's on the gator and he goes back.
Yeah, and so that, that could be done as far as Dean asking, if there's only one, his organization signed the contract to provide fifteen to twenty hours. If it's too much for him, then that's, if they have another, uh, trainer that can, can take things that might alleviate that. So he wouldn't have to do it. But the company did sign that contract to provide up to that amount. So.
And so, I mean, they're not, they're not saying they won't provide. They said they would do whatever we want. It's, it's a, to me, it's a matter of how much money do you wanna spend and is there the need to have somebody there at all those events? And that's where we need to make that decision.
But I agree with your, your thought that you can burn one person out. If he had to be here every single night with the family and everything, that would be, that, that burns.
So I can, I can reach out and I can try to figure out, uh, I mean, I don't know those numbers yet. I just looked at, that seventeen hundred was just winter. Cause that's the schedule I have. But I could look at, uh, for the spring, cause I'm thinking about the fall, um, I, I, I mean, they're here at volleyball, they're here at football. Um, they don't go to golf, they don't go to, um, cross country. Well, he's at, he's at Cross Country Home Meet. But, uh, I mean, I could look at that cost and put those numbers together and, and give that to you. I think it might be better to do that than make a decision right now, not knowing what those numbers are.
Well, you know what a ball feels like when it bounces up that tree and gets you mad?
Let's go ahead and have you do that. Re, re, research a little bit further. Okay.
I, I think too, as, as a former coach, you know, like, even if you go to another school, if there's something out there, it's you. So I, I think it would be a good idea to do a refresher or train with coaches regardless of, of where you move on this, just, just for their, all, you know, confidence and safety of kids.
All right. So now we move on. Do we have any board correspondence?
Uh, no.
Any agenda items?
No.
Do we have reason to go into closed session this evening?
We do for personnel, real estate, possible, uh, litigation.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Ricky will start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye. Motion passes. We're now in closed session. Thank you all for coming this evening. Back from closed session. Ready?
Yep, we're ready. All right. Uh, moved to accept the resignation of Mrs. Heather Shide as a Spanish teacher in post-prom, uh, sponsor effective at the end of the eighteen nineteen school year. I would like to add with regrets to that.
She is so dang good.
Seven.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second?
With regret, aye.
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 Motion passes.
Uh, moved to approve Erica Brainbridge as a Spanish teacher for the nineteen twenty school year.
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Uh, moved to approve Kyle Hecker as a mathematics teacher for the nineteen twenty school year.
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Sorry.
Moved to approve the spring volunteer coaches as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Uh, moved to keep the list of closed session minutes closed after that.
So moved.
Second. Start with me.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion with Dean, second with Mike. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.